Meeting, I welcome everyone being here and once again, I ask you to please join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the law of the Constitution of the United Nations under oath, in this call of liberty and justice.
Okay, we're going to move into fun stuff as soon as we can. Roll call noting we are a full board this evening. We were properly notified per state statute nineteen point eight four two. Thank you Kate and Laura. And with that, I'm going to turn it right over to Laura for her superintendent report.
Yes, and the best superintendent reports are when the superintendent says next to nothing, and that's what my plan is for tonight. A month or two ago, we had instrumental music program come and perform for you, and we can't have instrumental without backing that up with our vocal music program. So I want to commend and introduce our vocal music teachers and choral directors Grace Bielski and Gustavo Chaviano are here as instructors. I'll turn it over to them to introduce North Campus Choir and what they might be doing for us this evening.
Hi, everyone. This is four of our senior ladies. They're going to be competing in a barbershop competition in May, and so it's actually the same day as prom. So we're going to drive up to Stephen's Point, but they still wanted to rehearse on their
We have more guys that were not able to be here. That quartet is just four of many girls that are in North Choir.
own time and work on this. So they're singing a barbershop called "That's Life," made famous by like Frank Sinatra.
North Choir consists of audition juniors and seniors. So in total, we have about eighty students in North Choir.
So. It was like, do you feel a little awkward?
And so it's a rather large group. And so Grace and I, we team teach a lot, and then we also like Grace will work with
Is that spot for them? Okay. Okay.
Thanks.
the girls, I'll work with the guys.
But now.
We do separate songs, and then we kind of combine and do songs together. The song that we're going to sing for you guys tonight is called "Near My God To Be." It's a traditional hymn. And so in choir, it's part of our goals to expose the students to like a wide variety of different styles of music, singing in different languages. So in this arrangement of "Near My God To Be," you're going to hear the familiar English lyrics, but then underneath it, you're going to hear like this more traditional Latin text. And so this song was made popular, or the arrangement was made popular by a group called BYU Vocal Point. And so what's cool about this is like, a lot of their freshman years, I would show a video of BYU Vocal Point as an example of just like an unbelievable men's chorus singing this exact song. And so it's super cool that all these guys here have gone through baritone chorale, where they were singing, you know, one part, you know, if we're lucky. And now they're up here, those of you in baritone chorale, right? But now they're up here singing in pretty much eight-part harmony. So it's just amazing what two or three years will do. So here.
And excellent teachers.
Here is "Near My God To Be."
(Singing)
So what you guys should know is, so these are some of the men in North Choir. We have more guys that were not able to be here. That quartet is just four of many girls that are in North Choir. North Choir consists of audition juniors and seniors. So in total, we have about eighty students in North Choir. And so it's a rather large group. And so Grace and I, we team teach a lot, and then we also like Grace will work with the girls, I'll work with the guys. We do separate songs, and then we kind of combine and do songs together. The song that we're going to sing for you guys tonight is called "Near My God To Be." It's a traditional hymn. And so in choir, it's part of our goals to expose the students to like a wide variety of different styles of music, singing in different languages. So in this arrangement of "Near My God To Be," you're going to hear the familiar English lyrics, but then underneath it, you're going to hear like this more traditional Latin text. And so this song was made popular, or the arrangement was made popular by a group called BYU Vocal Point. And so what's cool about this is like, a lot of their freshman years, I would show a video of BYU Vocal Point as an example of just like an unbelievable men's chorus singing this exact song. And so it's super cool that all these guys here have gone through baritone chorale, where they were singing, you know, one part, you know, if we're lucky. And now they're up here, those of you in baritone chorale, right? But now they're up here singing in pretty much eight-part harmony. So it's just amazing what two or three years will do. So here.
And excellent teachers.
Here is "Near My God To Be."
(Singing)
So what you guys should know is, so these are some of the men in North Choir. We have more guys that were not able to be here. That quartet is just four of many girls that are in North Choir. North Choir consists of audition juniors and seniors. So in total, we have about eighty students in North Choir. And so it's a rather large group. And so Grace and I, we team teach a lot, and then we also like Grace will work with the girls, I'll work with the guys. We do separate songs, and then we kind of combine and do songs together. The song that we're going to sing for you guys tonight is called "Near My God To Be." It's a traditional hymn. And so in choir, it's part of our goals to expose the students to like a wide variety of different styles of music, singing in different languages. So in this arrangement of "Near My God To Be," you're going to hear the familiar English lyrics, but then underneath it, you're going to hear like this more traditional Latin text. And so this song was made popular, or the arrangement was made popular by a group called BYU Vocal Point. And so what's cool about this is like, a lot of their freshman years, I would show a video of BYU Vocal Point as an example of just like an unbelievable men's chorus singing this exact song. And so it's super cool that all these guys here have gone through baritone chorale, where they were singing, you know, one part, you know, if we're lucky. And now they're up here, those of you in baritone chorale, right? But now they're up here singing in pretty much eight-part harmony. So it's just amazing what two or three years will do. So here.
And excellent teachers.
Here is "Near My God To Be."
(Singing)
So what you guys should know is, so these are some of the men in North Choir. We have more guys that were not able to be here. That quartet is just four of many girls that are in North Choir. North Choir consists of audition juniors and seniors. So in total, we have about eighty students in North Choir. And so it's a rather large group. And so Grace and I, we team teach a lot, and then we also like Grace will work with the girls, I'll work with the guys. We do separate songs, and then we kind of combine and do songs together. The song that we're going to sing for you guys tonight is called "Near My God To Be." It's a traditional hymn. And so in choir, it's part of our goals to expose the students to like a wide variety of different styles of music, singing in different languages. So in this arrangement of "Near My God To Be," you're going to hear the familiar English lyrics, but then underneath it, you're going to hear like this more traditional Latin text. And so this song was made popular, or the arrangement was made popular by a group called BYU Vocal Point. And so what's cool about this is like, a lot of their freshman years, I would show a video of BYU Vocal Point as an example of just like an unbelievable men's chorus singing this exact song. And so it's super cool that all these guys here have gone through baritone chorale, where they were singing, you know, one part, you know, if we're lucky. And now they're up here, those of you in baritone chorale, right? But now they're up here singing in pretty much eight-part harmony. So it's just amazing what two or three years will do. So here.
And excellent teachers.
Here is "Near My God To Be."
(Singing)
So what you guys should know is, so these are some of the men in North Choir. We have more guys that were not able to be here. That quartet is just four of many girls that are in North Choir. North Choir consists of audition juniors and seniors. So in total, we have about eighty students in North Choir. And so it's a rather large group. And so Grace and I, we team teach a lot, and then we also like Grace will work with the girls, I'll work with the guys. We do separate songs, and then we kind of combine and do songs together. The song that we're going to sing for you guys tonight is called "Near My God To Be." It's a traditional hymn. And so in choir, it's part of our goals to expose the students to like a wide variety of different styles of music, singing in different languages. So in this arrangement of "Near My God To Be," you're going to hear the familiar English lyrics, but then underneath it, you're going to hear like this more traditional Latin text. And so this song was made popular, or the arrangement was made popular by a group called BYU Vocal Point. And so what's cool about this is like, a lot of their freshman years, I would show a video of BYU Vocal Point as an example of just like an unbelievable men's chorus singing this exact song. And so it's super cool that all these guys here have gone through baritone chorale, where they were singing, you know, one part, you know, if we're lucky. And now they're up here, those of you in baritone chorale, right? But now they're up here singing in pretty much eight-part harmony. So it's just amazing what two or three years will do. So here.
And excellent teachers.
Here is "Near My God To Be."
(Singing)
So what you guys should know is, so these are some of the men in North Choir. We have more guys that were not able to be here. That quartet is just four of many girls that are in North Choir. North Choir consists of audition juniors and seniors. So in total, we have about eighty students in North Choir. And so it's a rather large group. And so Grace and I, we team teach a lot, and then we also like Grace will work with the girls, I'll work with the guys. We do separate songs, and then we kind of combine and do songs together. The song that we're going to sing for you guys tonight is called "Near My God To Be." It's a traditional hymn. And so in choir, it's part of our goals to expose the students to like a wide variety of different styles of music, singing in different languages. So in this arrangement of "Near My God To Be," you're going to hear the familiar English lyrics, but then underneath it, you're going to hear like this more traditional Latin text. And so this song was made popular, or the arrangement was made popular by a group called BYU Vocal Point. And so what's cool about this is like, a lot of their freshman years, I would show a video of BYU Vocal Point as an example of just like an unbelievable men's chorus singing this exact song. And so it's super cool that all these guys here have gone through baritone chorale, where they were singing, you know, one part, you know, if we're lucky. And now they're up here, those of you in baritone chorale, right? But now they're up here singing in pretty much eight-part harmony. So it's just amazing what two or three years will do. So here.
And excellent teachers.
Here is "Near My God To Be."
(Singing)
So what you guys should know is, so these are some of the men in North Choir. We have more guys that were not able to be here. That quartet is just four of many girls that are in North Choir. North Choir consists of audition juniors and seniors. So in total, we have about eighty students in North Choir. And so it's a rather large group. And so Grace and I, we team teach a lot, and then we also like Grace will work with the girls, I'll work with the guys. We do separate songs, and then we kind of combine and do songs together. The song that we're going to sing for you guys tonight is called "Near My God To Be." It's a traditional hymn. And so in choir, it's part of our goals to expose the students to like a wide variety of different styles of music, singing in different languages. So in this arrangement of "Near My God To Be," you're going to hear the familiar English lyrics, but then underneath it, you're going to hear like this more traditional Latin text. And so this song was made popular, or the arrangement was made popular by a group called BYU Vocal Point. And so what's cool about this is like, a lot of their freshman years, I would show a video of BYU Vocal Point as an example of just like an unbelievable men's chorus singing this exact song. And so it's super cool that all these guys here have gone through baritone chorale, where they were singing, you know, one part, you know, if we're lucky. And now they're up here, those of you in baritone chorale, right? But now they're up here singing in pretty much eight-part harmony. So it's just amazing what two or three years will do. So here.
And excellent teachers.
Here is "Near My God To Be."
(Singing)
So what you guys should know is, so these are some of the men in North Choir. We have more guys that were not able to be here. That quartet is just four of many girls that are in North Choir. North Choir consists of audition juniors and seniors. So in total, we have about eighty students in North Choir. And so it's a rather large group. And so Grace and I, we team teach a lot, and then we also like Grace will work with the girls, I'll work with the guys. We do separate songs, and then we kind of combine and do songs together. The song that we're going to sing for you guys tonight is called "Near My God To Be." It's a traditional hymn. And so in choir, it's part of our goals to expose the students to like a wide variety of different styles of music, singing in different languages. So in this arrangement of "Near My God To Be," you're going to hear the familiar English lyrics, but then underneath it, you're going to hear like this more traditional Latin text. And so this song was made popular, or the arrangement was made popular by a group called BYU Vocal Point. And so what's cool about this is like, a lot of their freshman years, I would show a video of BYU Vocal Point as an example of just like an unbelievable men's chorus singing this exact song. And so it's super cool that all these guys here have gone through baritone chorale, where they were singing, you know, one part, you know, if we're lucky. And now they're up here, those of you in baritone chorale, right? But now they're up here singing in pretty much eight-part harmony. So it's just amazing what two or three years will do. So here.
And excellent teachers.
Here is "Near My God To Be."
(Singing)
So what you guys should know is, so these are some of the men in North Choir. We have more guys that were not able to be here. That quartet is just four of many girls that are in North Choir. North Choir consists of audition juniors and seniors. So in total, we have about eighty students in North Choir. And so it's a rather large group. And so Grace and I, we team teach a lot, and then we also like Grace will work with the girls, I'll work with the guys. We do separate songs, and then we kind of combine and do songs together. The song that we're going to sing for you guys tonight is called "Near My God To Be." It's a traditional hymn. And so in choir, it's part of our goals to expose the students to like a wide variety of different styles of music, singing in different languages. So in this arrangement of "Near My God To Be," you're going to hear the familiar English lyrics, but then underneath it, you're going to hear like this more traditional Latin text. And so this song was made popular, or the arrangement was made popular by a group called BYU Vocal Point. And so what's cool about this is like, a lot of their freshman years, I would show a video of BYU Vocal Point as an example of just like an unbelievable men's chorus singing this exact song. And so it's super cool that all these guys here have gone through baritone chorale, where they were singing, you know, one part, you know, if we're lucky. And now they're up here, those of you in baritone chorale, right? But now they're up here singing in pretty much eight-part harmony. So it's just amazing what two or three years will do. So here.
And excellent teachers.
Here is "Near My God To Be."
(Singing)
So what you guys should know is, so these are some of the men in North Choir. We have more guys that were not able to be here. That quartet is just four of many girls that are in North Choir. North Choir consists of audition juniors and seniors. So in total, we have about eighty students in North Choir. And so it's a rather large group. And so Grace and I, we team teach a lot, and then we also like Grace will work with the girls, I'll work with the guys. We do separate songs, and then we kind of combine and do songs together. The song that we're going to sing for you guys tonight is called "Near My God To Be." It's a traditional hymn. And so in choir, it's part of our goals to expose the students to like a wide variety of different styles of music, singing in different languages. So in this arrangement of "Near My God To Be," you're going to hear the familiar English lyrics, but then underneath it, you're going to hear like this more traditional Latin text. And so this song was made popular, or the arrangement was made popular by a group called BYU Vocal Point. And so what's cool about this is like, a lot of their freshman years, I would show a video of BYU Vocal Point as an example of just like an unbelievable men's chorus singing this exact song. And so it's super cool that all these guys here have gone through baritone chorale, where they were singing, you know, one part, you know, if we're lucky. And now they're up here, those of you in baritone chorale, right? But now they're up here singing in pretty much eight-part harmony. So it's just amazing what two or three years will do. So here.
And excellent teachers.
Here is "Near My God To Be."
(Singing)
So what you guys should know is, so these are some of the men in North Choir. We have more guys that were not able to be here. That quartet is just four of many girls that are in North Choir. North Choir consists of audition juniors and seniors. So in total, we have about eighty students in North Choir. And so it's a rather large group. And so Grace and I, we team teach a lot, and then we also like Grace will work with the girls, I'll work with the guys. We do separate songs, and then we kind of combine and do songs together. The song that we're going to sing for you guys tonight is called "Near My God To Be." It's a traditional hymn. And so in choir, it's part of our goals to expose the students to like a wide variety of different styles of music, singing in different languages. So in this arrangement of "Near My God To Be," you're going to hear the familiar English lyrics, but then underneath it, you're going to hear like this more traditional Latin text. And so this song was made popular, or the arrangement was made popular by a group called BYU Vocal Point. And so what's cool about this is like, a lot of their freshman years, I would show a video of BYU Vocal Point as an example of just like an unbelievable men's chorus singing this exact song. And so it's super cool that all these guys here have gone through baritone chorale, where they were singing, you know, one part, you know, if we're lucky. And now they're up here, those of you in baritone chorale, right? But now they're up here singing in pretty much eight-part harmony. So it's just amazing what two or three years will do. So here.
And excellent teachers.
Here is "Near My God To Be."
(Singing)
So what you guys should know is, so these are some of the men in North Choir. We have more guys that were not able to be here. That quartet is just four of many girls that are in North Choir. North Choir consists of audition juniors and seniors. So in total, we have about eighty students in North Choir. And so it's a rather large group. And so Grace and I, we team teach a lot, and then we also like Grace will work with the girls, I'll work with the guys. We do separate songs, and then we kind of combine and do songs together. The song that we're going to sing for you guys tonight is called "Near My God To Be." It's a traditional hymn. And so in choir, it's part of our goals to expose the students to like a wide variety of different styles of music, singing in different languages. So in this arrangement of "Near My God To Be," you're going to hear the familiar English lyrics, but then underneath it, you're going to hear like this more traditional Latin text. And so this song was made popular, or the arrangement was made popular by a group called BYU Vocal Point. And so what's cool about this is like, a lot of their freshman years, I would show a video of BYU Vocal Point as an example of just like an unbelievable men's chorus singing this exact song. And so it's super cool that all these guys here have gone through baritone chorale, where they were singing, you know, one part, you know, if we're lucky. And now they're up here, those of you in baritone chorale, right? But now they're up here singing in pretty much eight-part harmony. So it's just amazing what two or three years will do. So here.
And excellent teachers.
Here is "Near My God To Be."
(Singing)
So what you guys should know is, so these are some of the men in North Choir. We have more guys that were not able to be here. That quartet is just four of many girls that are in North Choir. North Choir consists of audition juniors and seniors. So in total, we have about eighty students in North Choir. And so it's a rather large group. And so Grace and I, we team teach a lot, and then we also like Grace will work with the girls, I'll work with the guys. We do separate songs, and then we kind of combine and do songs together. The song that we're going to sing for you guys tonight is called "Near My God To Be." It's a traditional hymn. And so in choir, it's part of our goals to expose the students to like a wide variety of different styles of music, singing in different languages. So in this arrangement of "Near My God To Be," you're going to hear the familiar English lyrics, but then underneath it, you're going to hear like this more traditional Latin text. And so this song was made popular, or the arrangement was made popular by a group called BYU Vocal Point. And so what's cool about this is like, a lot of their freshman years, I would show a video of BYU Vocal Point as an example of just like an unbelievable men's chorus singing this exact song. And so it's super cool that all these guys here have gone through baritone chorale, where they were singing, you know, one part, you know, if we're lucky. And now they're up here, those of you in baritone chorale, right? But now they're up here singing in pretty much eight-part harmony. So it's just amazing what two or three years will do. So here.
And excellent teachers.
Here is "Near My God To Be."
(Singing)
So what you guys should know is, so these are some of the men in North Choir. We have more guys that were not able to be here. That quartet is just four of many girls that are in North Choir. North Choir consists of audition juniors and seniors. So in total, we have about eighty students in North Choir. And so it's a rather large group. And so Grace and I, we team teach a lot, and then we also like Grace will work with the girls, I'll work with the guys. We do separate songs, and then we kind of combine and do songs together. The song that we're going to sing for you guys tonight is called "Near My God To Be." It's a traditional hymn. And so in choir, it's part of our goals to expose the students to like a wide variety of different styles of music, singing in different languages. So in this arrangement of "Near My God To Be," you're going to hear the familiar English lyrics, but then underneath it, you're going to hear like this more traditional Latin text. And so this song was made popular, or the arrangement was made popular by a group called BYU Vocal Point. And so what's cool about this is like, a lot of their freshman years, I would show a video of BYU Vocal Point as an example of just like an unbelievable men's chorus singing this exact song. And so it's super cool that all these guys here have gone through baritone chorale, where they were singing, you know, one part, you know, if we're lucky. And now they're up here, those of you in baritone chorale, right? But now they're up here singing in pretty much eight-part harmony. So it's just amazing what two or three years will do. So here.
And excellent teachers.
Here is "Near My God To Be."
(Singing)
So what you guys should know is, so these are some of the men in North Choir. We have more guys that were not able to be here. That quartet is just four of many girls that are in North Choir. North Choir consists of audition juniors and seniors. So in total, we have about eighty students in North Choir. And so it's a rather large group. And so Grace and I, we team teach a lot, and then we also like Grace will work with the girls, I'll work with the guys. We do separate songs, and then we kind of combine and do songs together. The song that we're going to sing for you guys tonight is called "Near My God To Be." It's a traditional hymn. And so in choir, it's part of our goals to expose the students to like a wide variety of different styles of music, singing in different languages. So in this arrangement of "Near My God To Be," you're going to hear the familiar English lyrics, but then underneath it, you're going to hear like this more traditional Latin text. And so this song was made popular, or the arrangement was made popular by a group called BYU Vocal Point. And so what's cool about this is like, a lot of their freshman years, I would show a video of BYU Vocal Point as an example of just like an unbelievable men's chorus singing this exact song. And so it's super cool that all these guys here have gone through baritone chorale, where they were singing, you know, one part, you know, if we're lucky. And now they're up here, those of you in baritone chorale, right? But now they're up here singing in pretty much eight-part harmony. So it's just amazing what two or three years will do. So here.
And excellent teachers.
Here is "Near My God To Be."
(Singing)
So what you guys should know is, so these are some of the men in North Choir. We have more guys that were not able to be here. That quartet is just four of many girls that are in North Choir. North Choir consists of audition juniors and seniors. So in total, we have about eighty students in North Choir. And so it's a rather large group. And so Grace and I, we team teach a lot, and then we also like Grace will work with the girls, I'll work with the guys. We do separate songs, and then we kind of combine and do songs together. Kind of, if you could share what the final emphasis was in terms of your advocacy and your ask of the Joint Finance Commission.
Sure. Just gonna say it for later.
Kind of there, I guess, so.
I think there's three key points that I tried to point out in. The testimony that I provided to the Joint Finance Committee Budget Year in Waukesha last week. Number one, Arrowhead operates as one of the lowest. Per pupil revenue limits in Waukesha County. It's pretty amazing for the programs and things that we provide here and the success of our students and the quality of the staff that we have here. But not a lot of people know that. They think, they look at Arrowhead, and they think we've got loads of money that we're spending here, and we are. Bottom of Waukesha County, one of the bottom of Waukesha County. So that was one main point. Second thing was asking for the Legislative Committee, the Legislature, to commit to a fifteen hundred and ten dollar per pupil increase. So where did that number come from? It comes from, if we were to give them, like the initial revenue limit law when it went into place in nineteen ninety-three. It said that the per pupil increases would increase with inflation. Had we done that last school year and this school year. And then the Legislature would do it for next school year and the following school year, this next biennium. It's fifteen hundred and ten dollars just to keep up with inflation. And so last year, last school year, we had a zero increase. This year, we had a zero increase. We know what inflation did during those two years. We know what it's going to do the next two years. And so an inflationary increase is a reasonable ask, and that's what we asked for. Last year's budget, the legislators will tell you, we put money into education, and they did. That money went to state aid. That didn't help provide more dollars for students to operate with. When the money goes to state aid, it reduces property taxes. It doesn't allow schools to have more revenue to work with. It just reduces the property tax. So be careful when you hear things. Listen carefully. Are they putting money toward revenue limit? Or per pupil increases in categorically? Or are they putting it toward? State generally, general equalization. If they're putting it to equalization, it's property tax relief. If they're putting it to revenue limits and categorically, that's helping our budget. We're not getting a lot of help on the budget side. We're getting a proper tax. That's what happened in the last budget. Biennial budget, and so we're just asking for an inflationary increase. For that biennium that they missed, and now this next biennium, I'm going to be starting on July one. That was the second point. Third point is just a. We transferred two million dollars a year out of our general fund into the Special Education Fund just to make it whole. There's not enough revenue coming into the Special Education Fund through state aids or federal grants. To offset the cost of that Special Education Fund. So we transfer two million dollars a year. We're asking for a meaningful. Lift or increase in state categorical aid for special education eligible expenses. And then I guess the last point that was kind of stated in the letters. We're heading into a fiscal cliff. The Legislature chose to have school districts use the ESAR money, even though the ESAR money varied widely. Some got millions and millions of dollars of ESAR money. We had one point eight million dollars of ESAR money over those three fiscal years. Forty thousand in first ESAR one, when others were getting millions. ESAR two, about six hundred thousand, and ESAR three, about just over a million dollars. So.
We just, ESAR is, it's an acronym in school language for COVID relief grant.
Right. So that was the state's rationale for not giving any increase on revenue limits or keeping up with inflation. Use your ESAR money. We didn't have a lot to use. We are using it to plug our budget hole that we had to. Because of not having a reasonable inflationary revenue. So anyway, that money is going to come to an end. We're using it this, used it last year, we're using a bit of it this year. We have a little bit left over that we use again to help us through next year, but. But then we're at a cliff, and we need to somehow backfill that, and that's why we're asking for the inflationary increase. Probably more than you wanted to hear, but that's it.
Appreciate that and appreciate you going to act as advocate. It was an interesting experience. I think there were, best guess, fifteen to twenty other schools represented there along with us.
Just over twenty. It was like twenty-two, twenty-three that ended up testifying. And one of the school business managers I spoke with afterwards said that he got a comment from his local legislator saying. How impressed they were with the schools and having a common message. It helps them to know what we're looking for when the message is common. And that's kudos to some of the business officials working together, just making sure we're. We're being reasonable with our ass.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you again.
Oh, can I say one more thing? If you haven't seen those letters. Check them out because you might learn something, and if you have questions, come and see me. Be happy to help. I want to make sure everyone understands how this stuff works and. And why we're in a situation where. We're gonna have to ask for additional dollars from the community. If the legislators don't step up and they haven't shown us a history of doing that.
And Jeff is really, he's a fantastic numbers guy, and so he really devoted his whole segment on that. Very specifically to the financial, and my letter was, in fact, probably just a little more directed at. From a school board perspective, what does that mean? What kind of decision-making has to happen? What kind of concerning cuts or changes need to be made within the school to keep us whole? And so that was kind of the emphasis mine, and again, I think Chris wrote a really fine letter as well. Kind of emphasizing some additional points, and Craig came, and it was, I think, a nice show of support representing Arrowhead. At Joint Finance. So thanks to everyone. Next up is Chairperson Becker with Building and Browns.
Thank you. We do not have a meeting in the month of April. Our next meeting is Thursday, May the fourth, at six forty-five a.m. Well, what we've been doing is, I know from the last meeting that we had, Kevin is collecting bits for the electrical of selection there. We had some addendum, a little bit of delay. We had some addendum for that bit, and we'll be reviewing all of that capital's available. To talk about how we.
Thank you, Chairperson Becker. Chairperson Legar, personnel.
Personnel committee was mostly closed session. Then returned to discuss staffing projections for the coming year. We, sorry, we discussed the methodology that we might implement in. Structuring our superintendent evaluate. And anticipate future work on the employee and an annual review process. There is a action item that's been laid out tonight. You ready? I'll make the motion then. That. Arrowhead High School withdrew from the Waukesha County Area Schools Health Insurance Purchasing Cooperative. And moved to self-insuring for health insurance using a third-party administrator for claims operations.
I'll second. Is there any? Discussion? I'm hoping Jeff can provide.
I love that you give some context here.
Yeah, he's put a great deal of work.
So we've been a part of the Waukesha County Area Schools Cooperative for Health Insurance for a number of years. And the last two years, that consortium, that group has had some really good experience. With our claims data. With that good experience, we were not. Given the benefit of a good renewal. So the initial renewal from our carrier at the time, United Healthcare, was a twelve percent increase. This is after two profitable years that they had on the consortium. And so we negotiated down, working with our consultant, M three, negotiating that, we negotiated that down to nine percent. And Arrowhead and a couple of other larger districts decided that's, that's not good enough, and let's look at some other options, and. One of the options is to look at going out on our own and being insured by United Healthcare, which would lower our renewal a little bit. And another option would be to go self-funded, and a third option would be to go self-funded with the captive. Layer of protection, and that's the one we're opting for to move forward, or what I'm recommending, how we move forward with. It gives us the opportunity to save off of our renewal. The expected savings would be four hundred thousand. Now, there's a chance we could lose on that. The chance of the maximum we can lose would be a hundred thousand. Paying a hundred thousand more than what the renewal rate came in. So there's a variance. That's our experiences. We have a healthy group right now. We want to keep it that way. We're going to continue our wellness programs to make sure we have healthy staff. That love coming to work and go home safely each day and come back healthy each day, and that helps your premiums. If you have healthy people and you're doing the wellness activities, your performance could help. That helps your premiums, and. I think Arrowhead has been doing a lot of that, and I think it's time for us to start creating some of those rewards as a district. Not everyone in the consortium. Did as well on some of the wellness activities, and that hurts experience. So I think this is a good option for us. I think it makes a lot of sense. We've got a lot of details to work out yet, but this is the first step is getting the approval to. Move away from the consortium, so that the co-op, we won't be the only ones. Two others have already given notice that they're leaving. We would be the third, and I anticipate a fourth one coming soon after us. So the co-op may end up being six schools in the end, if they choose to stay together, and then the other four will be going out on their own individually.
Some people, when they hear the word self-funded, may not understand and think that we pay for everything. And disaster could be disastrous. Can you explain how there's a maximum pocket and how that's achieved?
Yeah, we would, we would. Purchase stop-loss coverage. So the maximum we'd pay on an individual, let's for example, would be. Fifty thousand dollars worth of claims. After that, the stop-loss carrier would step in, and actually, that's where this captive layer. You purchase into this captive layer, which is the next three hundred thousand dollars of cost. So now we've really got three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of. Coverage before we have to go to that final, the real stop-loss carrier. But we're saving by grouping with about seventy-five other companies. In multiple industries on that captive layer. We could lose on that captive layer as a group. And then we would end up having to pay him more than what the layer is costing us, but we could also win, which we get the dividends back in the column here. If that captive does well. We also can win on our first layer, our fifty thousand dollar one. So. That's, that's how that works, and then you buy the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar stop-loss, it makes that a lot less expensive when you're buying a three hundred and fifty thousand versus. Buying stop-loss coverage at fifty thousand. And pay a lot less money for that, so. That's essentially how it works that out.
Yes, and just to express that we don't have a naked risk that's unlimited. We certainly have a risk capped and. That we're not being.
Right, and I said the maximum risk would be a hundred thousand dollars more than our renewal came in at. The wheels would have to pull off the bus for that to happen. I mean, it's just not fathomable that that would happen. The expected risk is pretty real and pretty conservative, and we can do better than expected too. And I said the expected was the same as a four hundred thousand dollars off, you know. So if we beat that, who knows? You know, and maybe we don't. Maybe we only save two hundred thousand off, but we still save some. And so anytime we do well on that insurance plan, we'll put those in reserves for the year when it doesn't go well. And we won't use that to balance budgets, but the idea would be that we can keep our premiums. Within, you know, low zero to five percent each year, you know, and ideally, you know, zero, one percent each year. Just keep those premiums where they are today for the next five years or so. And let not see the. Zero to two percent to three percent to sometimes a ten percent increase that an insurance company. I've been told that generally. An organization is going to win. Three to four of five years of the insurance where the companies, and when you're fully insured, they're keeping that profit. If we're self-insured, and we win three out of five years. We get to keep those and put it in our reserves. So.
Jeff, could you remind the board, what's our employees that use insurance? What? What's the percentage of the premium that they pay versus the district? And also, what would this mean for the insurance who's willing, employees experience a lot of change in their coverage?
Ideally, the employee is going to have a new insurance card, and they won't see any difference. We're gonna, we're buying into the same network. We're buying into the same pharmacy plan that we currently have. We're using the same. TPA, third-party administrator, to administer the plan, so it'll look essentially the same as what we have today, only. It'll look different in the business office. We'll be paying the claims every week. There'll be an automatic draw on our bank account. But that's where we'll set a premium, and. That premium is going to be set aside into our own liability account to then pay all those claims. And then what is the, the plate is twelve percent, we pay eighty-eight percent of insurance costs. We have a high deductible plan that is currently at fifty-six hundred dollars for a family, twenty-eight hundred dollars for a single plan. And that's going to go up to three thousand, six thousand next year. There's IRS rules that are asking for that, requiring that increase for next year.
Jeff, didn't you say it was easier to track? So that we could see how we were doing, where when we were in the consortium, you couldn't really do that to see how Arrowhead was doing compared to other schools?
Right, that's a great point. That's one of the biggest benefits of. Self-insuring yourself is you have the data. You know how to tweak your plan design around your data. And you can save a lot of money just on adjusting your plan based on the use. Usage of your people. We don't have that right now. We have data of ten districts as a whole, but we don't have Arrowhead's specific data, and we don't know names, so. Things like that, we won't, people won't be called out because maybe they had a shoulder surgery or anything like that. We. We have the numbers and the, you know, the. What caused those numbers, but not names. So people don't have to worry. And there's still major privacy. They have a law that will be difficult to comply with all the way along.
So at the end of the day, for the. Teachers and staff administration perspective, it should be a pretty seamless transition. Self-funding.
That's the goal.
Well, now we have a motion and a second. Would there be any further discussion?
Yeah, just, I think it's noteworthy to share for the record that. Not all finance directors are created equal, and we are blessed here to have a finance director that's taking this on as a passion project. It's a lot of extra work, and it could potentially reap a lot of savings to the taxpayers of the district, so I just wanted to publicly thank you, Jeff, for your hard work on this.
Thank you.
I think there's another benefit is the wellness program. I think it will actually generate a longer sustainment of the wellness program that actually benefits our teachers as well, because. Now Arrowhead will get the benefits of our teachers remaining healthy, not just to keep them in the classroom with their students, but their health as well, because. There's additional benefits that even go beyond the presentation, which is great.
There are two pieces that are going over automatically that I want to be upfront about where. We had a nurse liaison that was a nurse that worked for United Healthcare, worked with us. She actually resigned. A few weeks ago, but anyway, we're not replacing that in our new program going forward because it's not being offered.
Can you just? Let's just be clear, that's not our district nurse that is the most student. That was a, a one day a week consortium nurse that would come to Arrowhead for staff and then travel to the other states.
And we're paying a lot of money for that and not getting a lot of use out of it. Because our people didn't. They must not have needed it and weren't using, I had to beg them to go see Nurse Sue and, and talk about your health results, your biometric screening results. But anyway, so that piece will be, we'll find another way to, to do that. And then the Rally, the app, anyone using that Rally app, that's going away, so be sure to collect your two hundred dollars now. Turn that in for your Amazon gift cards by June thirtieth or you're out of luck. We won't have that program next year, but we'll, we'll look at some other types of wellness programs rather than paying the insurance company to buy that, we'll. Invest those dollars ourselves and provide something that's good for Arrowhead.
Good, well, thank you. And so I guess we need to go to a vote. Would you like to carry on or?
Would anything I had offered would just be redundant and.
So we have an action item here, we've got a motion on the table to. Accept the withdrawal from the Waukesha County Area Schools Health Insurance Purchasing Cooperative. And move to self insuring for health insurance using the third party administrator for claims operations. Hearing no further discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, and again, thank you for all the hard work. Apparently, there's a next meeting date for personnel. April nineteenth? Thank you, Chairperson Lerner, next up is Chairperson Ferris with us.
Thank you, Madam President. Just for. A small moment of levity, I, you may notice that there's a, a tenth board member up here this evening. I promised one of my daughters, if I won reelection, that I would bring Rupert and he would sit next to me on the table, so if you have any questions for Rupert. You know, let him know about that. Okay, so we had a wonderful policy meeting on April sixth. We started by discussing the current sponsorships and where that stands. We have a potential discussion and action item tonight to. Approve that any sponsorships in excess of ten thousand dollars would be brought to the board for approval. And also that if there were any sponsorships greater than five thousand dollars that our, our superintendent would bring that to our attention. At a time that is convenient to our superintendent. So it's not critical to amass documents and if we have an excess of people that want to. Sponsor five thousand dollars, that would be a good problem to have. The next, the next piece that we discussed was, my computer works with me here. Discussing. Access by, oh, discussing Canvas and access to Canvas. This is going to be an ongoing discussion, we do have. Have directed administration with looking into the idea of. Allowing board members to have access to Canvas temporarily and how that would work and if that's contradictory to any policies. That we have, that's kind of the. A little bit of a middle ground that we found, so that's going to be brought forth in the next policy meeting again to discuss. Following that, we discussed. Laura brings forth any. Conflicts with regards to our policy three, three, three that happen pretty much on a quarterly basis. This, that's the non discrimination and critical policy, there was one anonymous concern, but no. Major violations of this policy at share this time. And then finally, we had a. Discussion of the policy handbook, the fact that we got through the entire policy handbook last time. Discussing the idea of bringing that forward again for discussion and action to approve policy handbook as of this date to be complete. And then the last item, I'll be started just to discuss briefly the policy six forty nine. We have the task administration with bringing forth their recommendation on the self owned policy that was brought forward. That will be again at our next policy committee meeting, so looking forward to it. And we have two discussion action items.
Thank you. Okay, the first is a discussion and action on policy eight fifty one sponsorships. And as Chairperson Ferris alluded to, that requires the assertion of. The following language. Final approval of all sponsorship agreements in excess of ten thousand dollars must be obtained by the Board of Education. Do I have a motion to approve that language change? Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the language change to policy eight fifty one sponsorship, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Then we have the action to approve the policy, the district policy handbook for the twenty three, twenty three, twenty four school year. Do I have a motion to approve the handbook?
I'll make the motion to approve the handbook.
Oh, sorry, thank you. Any further discussion?
If I could just jump in just to clarify, I know the board is aware of this, but just for the sake of the community. We traditionally approve the whole handbook because it's been reviewed in its entirety. But by saying it's approved for next year, that doesn't mean it's locked in for a whole year. Or has the jurisdiction to modify and approve changes, new policies, remove policies. At any time that deemed necessary, so I just want that to be clear, it doesn't mean things are locked in for a year. It's just the formal approval that we've gone through a full review cycle and now essentially we start over.
Thank you, Laura, that's important. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion to approve the district policy handbook for twenty through twenty four, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Then our next meeting is May sixteenth.
Super, thank you, Chairperson Ferris. Other reports. Wasby, I have nothing to report, Mr. Evers. So we will turn it over to. Lynn Volkottas with regards to school advocacy day at the Capitol.
So as I indicated, on March twenty second, Wasby had their Capitol Day. This is the first time that anyone on the Arrowhead School Board had actually been in attendance for this. So it was kind of a learning day to see how Wasby also puts this together, so the agenda was opening remarks, they had a panel discussion. They went through the budget of how the money is currently spent through. As well as proposed ideas right now with the budget, as everyone knows, the budget's not being improved until probably later this summer. And then they went into discussion on how to actually talk to your representatives. So Wasby actually gave out three different scenario sheets of, these are items that they recommended that if you didn't know what you wanted to talk to your representatives about, here were some starting points. Some of the facts about this was, we actually had out of a hundred and thirty different offices at the Capitol. There was enough people in attendance to go visit a hundred and ten of their local representatives. So that was an all time high for Wasby, so they were very excited about that. As I indicated earlier, I actually ended up attending one of the offices where they didn't have any representation. Just because in that way we were able to talk about some generalities about school funding. So many of the things that they did share, again, I shared that Jeff and does a great job with all of his numbers and everything that he gives us. So it wasn't necessarily surprise things, but for us, I kind of took a good takeaway of what Wasby is doing. From their perspective and figuring out how do we do things on top of what Wasby's already doing in order to get more of the public involved. So that was kind of my takeaway for the day. I did go into Representative Duco's office, we had two superintendents from our feeder schools. I should say one superintendent from a feeder school, also Hamilton Sussex also joined us in there. And we had three other board members from our feeder schools that were in there with us. We could not go into Capita's office because with their, the emotion on the set of floor that afternoon, his office is too close to the. Hall, so we're not able to actually go talk to his staff members. Let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you for that, and thank you so much for going. It's pretty amazing that this is the first time that Arrowhead's had our presentation, that's we very much appreciate you being. I think we will kind of forego the discussion around the joint finance committee budget hearing, we discussed that earlier. Moving forward to new business discussion, action on food service management company. Well.
Sure, I'll discuss first.
If you could, that would be great, thanks, Jeff.
So periodically, we have to go out for bid on a number of items, but this happens to be one of them, we, we contract our food service program. Currently, we're using Chartwell's and using it for. Been ten plus years. Anyway, we went out to bid, we had four bidders and it sent out, I, I sent that bid, our E out to request for proposal out to. Fifteen different vendors, it also goes out in the newspaper, so it's widely publicized that we're out for, for bid. We received four bids, one letter indicating no bid. The bids are, are incumbent, Chartwell's came in with the best financial offer. By quite a bit. Another vendor looked really good in terms of their program offering. And it made it difficult, you don't have to grab the lowest bid or the best financial bid. But it did make sense to stay with our, to recommend going forward with our current vendor. Based on their financial offer and knowing what they can do to improve on the current program and what they're willing to commit toward that. Part of their offer that doesn't weigh into the actual evaluation matrix. Was to put just under twenty eight thousand dollars into that renovating space, but updating the space. With paint and signage and making it more exciting, so that was a kind of a bonus that was outside of the evaluation matrix that also. It's a good bonus of recommending going forward with them, so it was a good process, it, it takes a long time to go through that one, that's. That's a, that's a document about. Just under a quarter, maybe an eighth inch thick, four inches thick. And they have to go through that, there's a lot of numbers, there's a lot of. It's a lot of information to go through, a DPI has the requirements around how to go about that process, they give us the list of vendors to send it to. And then they verify that our process is accurate and. Compliance, so everything was good and we're ready to make a recommendation to stick with Chartwell's and Compass Group is their, their main. Name, I believe.
Jeff, on a go forward basis, the Chartwell's. Service, revenue neutral for the school district. We paper free reduced lunches or exactly how they spend their bottom line.
It's a great question, the food service fund is intended to self operate and. Any profits that, that fund would generate would go back into that program, so. Purchasing equipment, renovating spaces, go back into that program. If it is not profitable and it loses money, the general fund has to pay for the losses, so we've been operating at a, at a. Not, not at a loss, we've got small profits each year enough to do some smaller renovations. If we were to go for a capital type, perhaps, I know we'd want to incorporate some of that money into the kitchen spaces. To update those and make them look a little more modern, so it is a self sustained program and. With these bids, they were asked to provide a guarantee if they wanted to. And our incumbent, Chartwell's. Guarantees seventy five thousand dollars in profit in year one of the program. So they're anticipating eating one thousand, they guaranteed seventy five, if they only profit, if we only profit thirty five thousand, they'll write us a check for forty thousand dollars. For that goal. That guarantee doesn't continue, no, and it's only a one year contract, we have the ability to renew for up to four more years without having to go through this process. They know that we're expecting a lot out of them this year, a lot of improvements. And we have the ability to go out to our P next year again, we want to. Takes a lot of time, but who else might have to? But I, I, I think they're going to step up and I, I know they want to do well and they want to improve what they're doing. Got a good area manager that's going to be able to help with that.
I know this might be kind of a tough ask, but I, I'm, I'm wondering, I, I know that we have. Done surveys from students on, on their like dislike of the food and so forth. Which is pretty much the, the goal of getting the right company here. Do you, do you recall what student surveys look like from Arrowhead around, around the food and, and the service or the lunch hour?
I have not seen the surveys, I, I know they maybe have done, have they done?
I think they were touched on.
We've done them in the past.
I mean, they've generally been pretty positive, I think.
Yeah, high school kids are. That's kind of the feedback you get. That is part of the proposal though, that Chartwell's will be surveying students. That's part of their process for improvement to, to monitor what the students are liking or not liking and through surveys. Also offering some choices. Special events where they'll try this and try that and tell us which one you like better, that type of thing, so those are some of the things that we haven't been doing. And some of it was due to new director coming in right during COVID where it was emergency feeding and that's what he learned. So now he's going to learn the next piece.
Do you see like kind of transactions, does it show the detail of what's more commonly purchased instead of the surveys? See what's most commonly purchased or is it not that sophisticated?
I could look at that, but I don't.
So yeah, that's what I'd say, finding out what's popular, see what people like.
Actually, that's one of the asks, I mean, they'll put out four, five different sandwich offerings. And we want to pair that back to maybe three sandwich offerings and then two, make your own meal, you know, a rice bowl or a, a fudel bowl. You know, make it a little more exciting for high school kids.
Okay, thank you for that overview. So we have an action item. Before us here, that's a food service management company contracted in July first, twenty twenty three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. With up to four one year renewals between Arrowhead and Chartwell's Compass Group. So do we have a motion to approve? Would there be any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thanks for your work on that, Jeff.
They do sell adult meals, so if any of you. School food, come on in.
Come this year and then check it out next year.
Okay, so we move into future agenda items. Okay, hearing none, I think we were ready to adjourn. Okay, hearing none, I think we were ready to adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
I'll second. This is too early.